I will now call this regular meeting of the Corleville City Council to order on September 12th, 2023. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Knutson.
Here.
Gross.
Here.
Quinn.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Goodrich.
Here.
All council members are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city administrator, the city attorney, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the agenda with amending item RR on the consent calendar to read $2,887.60 instead of the $2,086.21.
All right, so we have a motion to amend the agenda. Could I get a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Gross. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The amended agenda is approved. On to item number four. I have a certificate of appreciation for Body Moves Fitness and their significant contributions to the community. Whereas, as part of celebrating its 150 years of rich history and bright future, the city of Corleville recognizes and values the dedication, commitment, and entrepreneurial spirit within our community. Local businesses and organizations keep our community, the state, and the American economy vibrant and strong. And whereas it is without question, Body Moves Fitness and Wellness Center exemplifies the spirit of local businesses within the Corleville community. And whereas, in January of 2013, Beth Pelton opened the doors of Body Moves Fitness and Wellness Center in the Clock Tower Plaza building at 1801 Second Street, Suite 250 in Corleville, Iowa. And whereas Body Moves Fitness and Wellness Center is Eastern Iowa's only movement studio specializing in fitness and wellness for midlife and better adults through in-studio and online programming. And whereas, for 11 years now, Beth Pelton and her dedicated staff had made it a mission to embrace a lifestyle approach to movement and lifelong learning. Now therefore, having served in the Corleville community, the city of Corleville wishes to recognize Body Moves Fitness and Wellness Center for their dedication to the citizens of Corleville and the surrounding community. Signed on this 12th day of September, Megan Foster, Mayor. Okay. How exciting, yes. Excellent. We'd like to say a few words.
I would.
Step up to the mic.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Foster, and council members. We are pleased to be a Corleville business and honored to be recognized during Corleville's 150th year anniversary. So thank you. We are in our 11th year of business in Corleville, and as Mayor Foster said, we are Eastern Iowa's only movement studio specializing in fitness and wellness for midlife and better adults. I'd like to introduce to you five of our 13 dedicated and professional instructors who are with us this evening. So on my immediate right in the front row is Patricia Arnold. She teaches Ageless Grace and Nia, two movements you may not be familiar with, so come on down. And one of our students is Virginia Hauser, who is a classical pianist, as well as a student in the studio. And then we have Sarah Neary, who's in the navy blue, and she wore her swag jacket tonight. Sarah is one of our yoga instructors who's been with us since day one. Claire Hugalay is a yoga instructor. She's been with us. She's our youngest instructor. She's been with us over two years now. And Sue Campney is our Tai Chi and Qi Gong instructor, who's been with us day one as well. So I thank you five for being with us this evening, too. We do offer a wide variety of movement forms from yoga to Nia, from Ageless Grace to Barefoot Balance, from Zumba to Strength Training, from Tai Chi to Qi Gong, to small group personal training. All of these movements are grounded on the cornerstones of the Functional Aging Fitness Model and the Exercise Guidelines of the American College of Sport Medicine and the U.S. Guidelines for Physical Activity. We also offer wellness programming, educational programming, that addresses the dimensions of health and wellness in all its dimensions: physical, mental, emotional, social, spiritual, and occupational dimensions, and environmental dimensions of health. Our workshops emphasize the six tenets of the American College of Lifestyle Medicine and the Blue Zone's nine principles of a healthy lifestyle and longevity. Of interest to the city council would be that urban sociologist Ray Oldenburg speaks of the importance of a third place in people's lives. Places one and two are our home and our work, and these days so often, one and two seem to be combined into one. But there is that third place, and that third place is essential for human growth and development. It's the place where you go, where you're accepted, where you're relaxed, where you learn, where you thrive. And what Body Moves is most proud of beyond our wellness programming and our exercise programming is that it is a third place. It is a very strong and supportive community of instructors and adult students, very generous giving, and a place to develop friendships, and hopefully a long life. So thank you again for recognizing Body Moves Fitness and Wellness Center. We're just two blocks down the street. And thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Would you like to grab a photo? Everybody, come on up.
I think, Mayor, you should be in Downward Dog for this.
You know what? I can do it. I used to teach yoga at this studio, a long time ago. Yeah, many years ago.
That's a competitor.
I'm retired.
I know it's a pub.
I just thought it was a major studio they learned.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I have a prayer for you here, too. There you go.
That's better, better.
Namaste.
Yes, thank you.
All right. I did get up bright and early and do a yoga hit this morning, so I'm not completely retired. Okay. All right. Number five, community comments. This is a time for members of the public to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda, or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each individual will have five minutes for their comments, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the individual speaking time and the overall comment period based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that a speaker might need. So I see we have someone who has already stepped up to the mic and is ready to go. Could you share your name with us, please?
You bet. I can remember.
Even though everybody knows who you are.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. My pleasure. My name is Rex Branstadter. I live at 2159 Lynn Crest Drive in Corleville, and I'm here this evening just to say we've had a wonderful, what I call a Corleville 150. It sounds like a race, but it's been the last year has been a wonderful time. All kinds of different events, different activities, met lots and lots of new people. Lots of different people have come to these events we've done, and I think it's an exciting time. It's a truly, truly outgrowth of what I call the Corleville spirit, Corleville pride. We started many, many years ago in Corleville spirit, and I'm here with an absolute 100% foolproof idea. Only thing is, it's my thinking of it's foolproof. Of course, it's up to your interpretation. Recently, we lost the stalwart of the community in a location. We lost the Corleville Post Office on the corner of 10th Avenue and 5th Street. Of course, they moved out west out here. And now the old site, which we used as the food pantry for years, is now gone. The city owns it. And I think therein lies an opportunity for what's called, you can ask Sheri about this, she doesn't, nobody knows I'm here about this, the Vest Pocket Park, which is something that a Parks and Rec Director would run away from in a minute. But I think this is an opportunity, in my opinion, to create Citizens Park. And the Citizens Park would entail re-putting up the flagpole down there. We've got the drive-through for the post office, for the mail thing, which is great. If we lose that, we won't get it back, so I'm glad we're doing that. So that doesn't leave much done, but it might leave enough with a flagpole, and maybe, maybe a stone that says, "In recognition of all those who have volunteered time, effort, ingenuity, knowledge, spirit to the city of Corleville from 1873 and on in the future," I would cite a couple things to you. In 1875, the Carson, the Ezekiel Clark family came to the town people of Corleville and said, "We need to build a new school, so let's do that." So they gave them a half acre of ground, which is where the old school now sits. And from that, they were actually meeting across the street in a small house, which we took down about five or six years ago, where Town Hall now sits. They moved the Town Hall, or excuse me, the old school out down there, was slated to be a one-room school, like every other town in Iowa, one-room school. That's the modus operandi at that time, was a one-room school, as we all know. Only Corleville built a two-room school. And they said, "Someday, we might need this," and that turned out to be true. And there are many, many things I can tell you about and draw your attention to over the years, but that was the beginning in 1876. And I think that spirit is still here, and I think that we have an opportunity for your consideration of making a citizen, as far as my idea goes, I don't have anything else for it other than that, but I'd like to have you think about it. And it doesn't have to be done today, obviously, but we've got the land down there, we've got the flagpole. If you put that back up, maybe we can come up with the Citizens Committee if this passes any litmus test and see what we can do. So on behalf of all, though, I would say, who volunteered all those things I mentioned before, whether it's sports or academics or whatever it may be, all over through the years, maybe just a little bit Citizens Park or Volunteer Park or something like that. So thanks for allowing me the time this evening. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you so much for sharing that with us. Really appreciate it. Okay. On to number six, Iowa River Landing Retail Lease. This is a public hearing. The owners of All Spice Inc. at Iowa River Landing wish to enter into a five-year lease agreement with one five-year option to renew for the space at 901 East Second Avenue, Suite 105 in the Iowa River Landing District. Alternate proposals for this were due on September 11th, 2023. So I will open the public hearing. Do we have anyone that would wish to speak to us about this? Do we have any written comments?
No written.
Okay. Close the public hearing, and we will consider the resolution.
Resolution approving the disposition of property and approving a lease agreement with All Spice Inc. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number seven, Lot 1 Altmeier Acres. This is the second reading of an ordinance that would rezone a 11.14 acre site, and this is for a proposed industrial building to be used for light assembly, fabrication, and distribution with additional office space. Could I have the ordinance, please?
An ordinance amending the Corleville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 2020-1009, as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Corleville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Lot 1 Altmeier Acres from C2 Arterio Commercial District to I PUD 1, excuse, PUD 2, Industrial Plan Unit Development 2 District, introduced for adoption, second consideration by Councilmember Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its second consideration, all ayes. Number eight, Lot 2 Jacobs Clear Creek Third Subdivision. This is the second reading of an ordinance that would rezone a 2.43 acre site for a proposed four-story hotel. Could I have the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 2023-1012, and ordinance amending the Corleville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 2020-1009, as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Corleville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Lot 2 Jacobs Clear Creek Third Subdivision from C2 Arterio Commercial District to CPUD Commercial Plan, Commercial Plan Unit Development 2 District, introduced for adoption, second consideration by Councilmember Quinn, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or comments on this item? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its second consideration, all ayes. Number nine, Clear Creek Stream Mitigation Bank. This is a contract for the banking instrument with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and upon execution allows the city to move forward with final construction document development, execution of conservation easement holder, and allows the city to sell the first 15% of credits for the bank. And we have our Parks and Rec Director Sheri Proud here to give us some more information on this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to give a kind of a little overview, not only for yourselves, but for our viewing public at home. This is a project that we've been working on for over four years. So just to bring that back up again and where we're at in this process, we went through an investigatory phase. We went through a prospectus with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, where they examined the feasibility, talked to us about what we needed to think about, and then allowed us to go into the mitigation banking instrument phase. That phase has taken almost two years to put together and to work back and forth with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers until it is just perfect. And every T is crossed, every I is dotted, and they are ready for us to sign it on our end, and they can sign it on their end. The mitigation bank in its entirety could be as much run all the way from I-380 along Clear Creek all the way to Highway 6 River, the Highway 6 Clear Creek Bridge by Wells Fargo. There, in the future, there could be as many as six reaches, plus Beck's Creek. In this particular mitigation banking instrument, we're considering Reach 1, Reach 3, and Beck's Creek. So this is an overview of that map of where that is. We are out by I-380 and 80. We come underneath, and Beck's Creek is the little Fisher Creek that runs down through the Charles Gay Farm area that is now Corleville Creekside Sports Park. And then Reach 2, what would consider to be Reach 2 is actually one that we considered with, we completed with the Iowa DOT in the 2018, 2019 year, and put in boulders, J-hooks, riparian banks, riparian buffers, things that we're talking about in the mitigation bank. And that's already completed. And then we're on to Reach 3, which is just down from the Coral Ridge Avenue area and follows kind of that bike trail down through here, Clear Creek Bike Trail. So that's where we're at. And then just an overview of some of the mapping that, and things that people can expect to see as we get into this phase of construction. This is Reach 1. We'll be increasing the sinuosity of the creek. The Clear Creek in this area has lost over 1,700 linear feet of sinuosity over the years as we've straightened things out, gone through different engineering practices over the last 100 years. So we're going to be able to put back sinuosity. We're going to be able to put in Oxbows and riparian buffers, so we can slow down water before it ever reaches the creek. And we'll be putting in different practices such as riffle pools and other practices along here, as well as stabilizing banks. Anytime where we put pressure on that, as that water comes around and forces itself against those outer curves, we'll be using both stone toe crop, outcropping underneath, as well as tow wood, which is taking basically, the trees are out, that are out there, they will cut them off, pull them out of the ground root ball and all, and those will be shoved into the banks, and that root ball will then sit along that bank and those curves, and then fill that back in with soil and with long native grasses. So it's going to be really different looking when we're done with it. We'll be planting a lot of new trees back, taking out some of the trees that are broken, fallen, falling into the creek, and we want to clear that creek out, create those spaces. You summarized kind of the technicalities of what we're doing tonight. We are ready to have you approve signing the mitigation banking instrument, and then that allows us to go, to go forward. Once both U.S. Army Corps of Engineers signs off on that, and the city of Corleville, we'll be able to release our first 15% of credits. And that's how we finance this project. Right now, our cost estimate for our construction of this first phase is sitting right around $4.2 million, and we'll pay ourselves through, we executed a bond back in December to be able to finance this project, and we'll be able to pay ourselves back through those credit sales. Do you have any questions? I think that kind of summarizes.
Yeah, that's great. We'll read the resolution, and then we'll have the discussion. So thank you very much for that overview. Okay. Can we have the resolution, please?
Resolution authorizing execution of the mitigation banking instrument for the Clear Creek Stream Mitigation Bank, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Jones, seconded by.
Seconded by Gross. You both were so fast with it.
Sorry, hi.
I'll try to go back and forth, yes. Okay. So now, questions or discussion on this item? I think this is a really fantastic project. I know it has been a long time coming. I remember hearing about it even, I think it was back during the pandemic. So we have been at this for at least three years.
Yeah, this is a new practice for, this is something that's new, a new practice for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers in the last five to seven years. And for it to then move into an urban stream makes this is unique. Back when we started talking about, there's more and more urban streams coming online. But just getting, you know, getting through that process has taken a little bit of time, but we're glad to have taken the time because I think we're getting a really good product out of it.
And just to clarify, the revenue that we would generate from the sale of these credits, other than, I think, is it about $200,000 that you have to set aside for the ongoing maintenance of the project? The revenue that we generate from the sale of these credits, they're unrestricted funds, correct?
They can be used for other projects, yes.
Yes. So once we will use the first batch to pay ourselves back, but then after that, any of that revenue is ours to use, and there's only one other bank?
One other bank that'll be coming online about the same time as we will be coming online with, but with a lot less credits available.
Yes, yeah. Excellent. Any other questions or comments?
So since you started this project, has the price of credits changed significantly at all?
It's kind of all over the place. I think when we first started the project, there weren't very many credits being, you know, especially in the state of Iowa, being sold. So I know this is a subject on work session to kind of talk about where we would be if we sold at different levels. And Kelly and I have put together a chart to show you where we would be at that. But I would say each, about twice a year, we talk with our consultant about where credits are, as well as with our contact with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And we've been pretty, pretty much in the same ballpark for about the last two and a half years of what they were expecting.
That's good.
One other thing that I just want to clarify, I know a few months ago, or a few meetings ago, we needed to purchase some credits, correct? But those were wetland credits.
Yes, this is different.
Different, and these are stream credits. So just a good, I thought that'd be a good point of clarification that.
Yes. Wetland credits have been around, wetland banking has been around for some time, and the city of Corleville has taken advantage of both wetland stream credits and purchases. But we also have cleared over 50, I think now we're up to about 57 acres of what we've also mitigated ourselves and cleared through the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. So we've done both practice, and either one works really well.
Great. Any other questions or comments?
It's exciting.
It is. I agree. Fantastic. Okay. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item B. This is for the purchase of credits to satisfy requirements for the Oakdale Boulevard Extension, the West Land Use Central Trunk Sewer Phase 2, and for the Kempf Lift Station abandonment. And this is all from the Clear Creek Stream Mitigation Bank. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving a purchase agreement for stream credits for the Clear Creek Stream Mitigation Bank for various city projects, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Any questions or discussion on this item? All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 10, Sewer Revenue Bonds. This is a loan for the planning and design of the Oakdale Boulevard Force Main and is not to exceed $193,000. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution taking additional action with respect to a sewer revenue loan and dispersment agreement, and authorizing, approving, and securing the payment of $193,000 sewer revenue loan and dispersment agreement anticipation project note, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any questions or comments on this item?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this loan is through the state Sewer SRF fund, and this is an interest-free loan to do the design work. And so this is a really good program, and then the intent would be, once we get ready for construction, that we would borrow the funds for this. It is in our capital improvement plan, and it's to replace the Oakdale Force Main and relocate it along Oakdale instead of in the backyards of various homeowners.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay. Can I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 11, Oakdale Boulevard Extension. So we have two parts for this agenda item. This contract will extend Oakdale Boulevard to the approximate intersection with Crossing Ridge Drive. So may I have the first resolution, please?
Resolution accepting bids and awarding contract for the Oakdale Boulevard Extension. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions?
This was actually bid in the spring, March, yes. And because of the previous items that we had to be able to purchase stream bank credits, and there were none to be had, we had to wait and not accept that bid until we were able to approve the stream bank mitigation. So that is an important item that you approved earlier, and now this project can move forward.
And obviously, the bid is still good, even though it's been six months.
Yes. The city engineer kept in contact with the contractor, explained what was going on with the low bidder, and they were willing to hold their bid until this fall, once we got the credits.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item B. Could I have this resolution, please?
Resolution approving the contract and bond documents for the Oakdale Boulevard Extension, introduced for adoption by Councilmember
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 12, Auburn Ridge. This releases the subdivision from the lien for construction of municipal improvements, except sidewalks and bioretention cells, without further documentation. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution accepting certain municipal improvements constructed in Auburn Ridge, Corleville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Jones, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Questions on this one?
So when did it open up?
As soon as we get the bond placed, so hopefully, yeah.
That quickly, okay. Shortcut for me, thanks.
Yeah, I mean, it is an important, it'll be, really serve as a local road for just the residents along there, but it is an important connection for people to not have to use Dubuque and First Avenue in that immediate neighborhood, so it'll be a very good connection.
Excellent. Any other thoughts on this? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 13, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I would like to ask council to consider a motion to approve the consent calendar from A to double S.
Okay, moved by Quinn. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved, all ayes. Number 14, City Administrators Report.
Just a couple items, Mayor, just one, remind people that the document shredding opportunity is coming up on September 23rd, from 8 to noon, and you can bring two boxes of items to have shredded, and then Mayor's Cleanup will be that first week of October, 2nd through the 6th, on the day of your garbage pickup, so that's it.
Great, thank you so much. Mayor's Report, I really don't have anything this evening. The only thing I wanted to say was, congratulations to the folks over at City Circle, our theater company here in Corleville. On Saturday night, we attended the City Circle Cabaret, where we got a preview of the songs from several of the shows that they'll be performing this season, and it was a really, really fun night, and I've said it many times, but I am really amazed by the amount of talent that we have in our community. So many gifted performers, and having these types of events and offering these types of programs is one of the things that really does make this community special. So make sure that you check out the new season, and get over there to see a show. And that's all I have. City Attorneys Report.
Well, I would like to say that it's good to be back.
Good to have you.
It's reassuring for me, anyway, to notice that Kelly did reasonably well while I was gone. Kevin?
I've got nothing.
Okay, thank you so much. Committee and Councilmembers Reports, we'll start down at this end with Councilmember Goodrich.
Thank you, Mayor. Want to ask people to put October 1st, it's a Sunday, from 2 to 5, on your calendar, mark it with a big red circle, you'll want to attend the final event, it'll be a birthday bash, so to speak, in celebrating our sesquicentennial, Corleville's 150th. So it's a free event, it will be at Extreme Arena from 2 to 5, Sunday, October 1st. More information to come, thanks.
Awesome, thank you so much. Councilmember Jones.
Just a couple things, Madam Mayor, primarily from my service on the Parks and Rec Commission. One of the things that I got involved in early on was discussions with the folks around the Dovetail area with concerns there, and a couple weeks ago, Sherri and Amy Fisher and Alex Bumar scheduled a meeting with the neighborhood, and I thought that meeting went extremely well, and I really felt, after listening to Amy and to Alex and to Sherri, they had a better understanding of what Dovetail is all about. And there's still some things that obviously would have to be done there, but there's a plan in place, and so I appreciate you, Sherri, coordinating that, because it really did, it started a little contentious, but by the end, everybody was in a pretty good mood and felt really good. So as my term comes to an end here, I'm glad to see at least some movement on that whole thing in the Dovetail area. The second thing I just wanted to mention, last night, Parks and Rec Commission met, and it's exciting, starting the process or working to, for the improvements to Northridge Park, and presentations were made by two different design firms, and I think there's some direction there about who we choose. But what I wanted to mention specifically is, on September 25th, there is going to be a neighborhood community open house at Northridge Pavilion to get some more input on the playground there. I don't know if there's, is there a time for that event?
The 26th.
Oh, it's the 26th?
4:30 to 6:30.
26.
Yeah, right in front of the council.
Okay, all right, okay, I'm sorry, 26, okay. 4:30 to 6:30, all right. So I just wanted to mention that, so if anybody has input on that park, parks used a great deal, and this will be a great improvement, so it's a chance to give some input on what you'd like to see, what citizens would like to see there. That's all, Madam Mayor.
Excellent, thank you. I am excited to hear about that, because we're at that park frequently. It's walkable from our, we take our son down there, you know, ride our bikes, I run through there a lot, so I'm eager to see what the plans are. That's exciting stuff. Okay, thank you so much. Councilmember Quinn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to remind the general public that the mobile clinic will take place this Saturday, September 16, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and it is going to be at the Corleville Food Pantry, so the community room where we share with the church. It's normally take place, mobile clinic normally take place at the library, but they are trying to reach more community member who, you know, might not frequent the library, and so we switch gear up a little bit, and we'll be hosting that at the Food Pantry, Saturday, September 16, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and anyone can come, they don't ask for insurance or anything like that. There will be vital, you know, so blood, heart rate, there will be lab offer for cholesterol and diabetes testing, there will be exercise and nutrition program and education, free eyeglasses for reading, prescription for medication to be refill, and then also a doctor will be present to answer any question, or if you need to visit with a doctor. Let's see, the community meal is coming up, that is going to be the last Friday of September, it's September 29, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. It is going to be at the front lawn of the library, so it's actually aligned with the Mid-Autumn Festival, so the theme is going to be Mid-Autumn Festival Celebration, and we encourage everybody to come out and eat with us. The menu's gonna be homemade comfort Chinese food, we're gonna have lantern making. If anyone in the community would like to showcase their talent, we do have a stage, and we do have a space for you to show off your, you know, your skills, whether it's musical, or poultry, or, you know, magic trick, whatever that may be, please reach out to me, and we'll get you a spot on the stage. The cookbook, 150 Years Anniversary Celebration Cookbook is, we just got the proof today, and it's looking amazing, so thank you to each and every single community member who contribute to the story and the recipe to make this cookbook a successful one. We can't wait to have that published, and be able to showcase and share that with community member at our birthday bash, October 1st. And thank you especially to the key staff at the Corleville Public Library for working so hard to get this going, and make it a reality. That's all I have, thank you.
Awesome, thank you so much. Councilmember Gross.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. The two quick things I have, first of all, tonight, there's a school board meeting, and on the agenda is, they're discussing the pool project that we've talked about, and it's really moving ahead nicely, so I think it's gonna be a great example of entities working together to benefit the community, so I want to report that. And second, tonight also, Extreme Arena is hosting a triple header volleyball match between all three high schools and teams across Iowa, which I have to go to after this meeting, but I just wanted to just bring that up, again, another great example of how the arena brings people in, and it's been a great partner with the local high schools. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And last but not least, Councilmember Knutson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to thank Eric Fisher and all the staff who worked on grants that have, we recently received related to single stream recycling, implementing that in the city in the next few months or so. Feedback I've gotten from constituents is very positive for that, and certainly grants will make it a little easier for us to implement that as well, so I want to thank him, and shout out to my dad, who's celebrating his 91st today, and had a little get-together right before he came here. I thought it was a little late, but I was still...
No, you weren't. Nope, you were right on time.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Great, thank you so much, and I'll just echo that about the recycling, I've heard so many people that are just thrilled about that, and thank you to our city staff that helped get that going. Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Quinn, seconded by Gross. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone.